Here we go. Hey, that's gonna be feedback. Hang on. Hang on. My name is Dan Carter. I am the chairman of board for the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. I'd like to welcome all the candidates, of course, and say thank you for coming out to try out for this position or these two positions that we know are sometimes thankless but are very necessary. And we know Brisbane is about community service, and this is one of those places that for sure is one of the biggest spots. Um, I'm gonna turn this over to the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank them as usual for sponsoring, and they're gonna be also our moderator. Margie Gator's gonna take over.
Hi, everybody. Just make sure I don't pull out a wire before I put this chair. Good evening and welcome, and I'm so thrilled to see such a nice group of crowd here tonight. It's awesome. Um, alright, welcome. First, a couple of announcements. Please turn off your silence or cell phones, so nobody's interrupted. Also, I think we should hear this, but no campaign literature that includes buttons or anything are allowed in this room. You can be outside. Uh, I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. I want to thank the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum tonight. And before we get into our forum proceedings, we're going to have a few minutes from Melinda Dubuff from the San Mateo County Elections Office to explain that this election is all mail-in. Do you? Oh, yes.
We'd like to thank the League for giving us this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Melinda Dubuff, and I work for the San Mateo County Elections Office. This upcoming November third election will be conducted by mail. Under AB 2028, San Mateo County has a pilot program of conducting local elections by mail. This will not apply to the 2016 presidential elections. The election coming up, every voter will receive a ballot in the mail, even if they're not a regular permanent vote-by-mail voter. There are in-person voting options. There, the thirty-day period, uh, voting period that starts on October fifth, we will have two voting centers, one in Redwood City, one in San Mateo. When you get your ballot, you can return it by mail. You can return it to any of the city halls in San Mateo County or the voting centers. On Election Day, we will have thirty-two universal polling places throughout San Mateo County. These are not your traditional polling places where you have to race home and get there before they close and sign the roster. These are in accessible locations, and you can go to any of them. So, you live in Brisbane, you work in Menlo Park, you can stop anywhere along the way and vote. We will have your ballot. You can vote by, on paper, or you can vote on our e-slate electronic voting machines. That's the case at the voting centers as well. So, it's important to note that the ballots are going to be delivered to the post office on October fifth. Depending on your local delivery service, uh, when you receive it depends on your local delivery service. If you don't receive it by October sixteenth, contact us. And we have a brochure out in the lobby explaining and giving you more information about this election, contact information, where you can call us and email us if you didn't get a ballot. And you are obviously very civic-minded people and probably belong to other organizations or groups. And if you have an interest in having one of us come out to a meeting or providing election information materials, not partisan materials, but, uh, because we are the nonpartisan office that administers the election, give us a call at the Elections Office, and we'll make arrangements to help get the word out about this important election. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Alright, with that, we will get rolling with our candidate forum. The League of Women Voters is a political organization of both men and women whose purpose is to promote active and informed participation in government. We appreciate the interest of groups such as the Brisbane Chamber in presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and the issues. The purpose of a candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, the audience. We hope that by bringing the candidates and voters together face-to-face, voters will be better informed and will make wise decisions on Election Day. We appreciate your interest in coming out to learn more about the candidates. Tonight you will hear from the candidates for the Brisbane City Council. There are six candidates for two seats. The term of office is four years. The purpose of this event is to provide a nonpartisan setting to let the voters hear all the candidates and help them choose. It is not for the supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate their own personal preferences, so please keep any expressions of disdain or delight to yourselves for now, and then we'll get to it. The candidates in alphabetical order are Madison Davis, Bondo, Tom Heinz, Alvin Louis, Jamil Munir, and Terry O'Connell. And these are the ground rules which were sent to the candidates ahead of time to which they all agreed. Uh, the opening statements will be three minutes. Then we will have the question period, loving all the questions. They will have one minute to answer, each of the candidates. All the candidates will have equal time to speak on the question, even if the question is addressed to only one candidate. Uh, each candidate will then have two minutes for a closing statement. Uh, we have a timekeeper this evening. She's Jean Johnson. She's down front. She will hold up signs for the candidates so they have some sense of how long they have left. Uh, one minute and thirty seconds at intervals towards the end, and the stop sign indicates when they, your time is up, uh, but they are allowed to finish their sentence as long as it doesn't lead into an entire paragraph. Uh, we have two ushers this evening, Jackie and Don Jacobberger. They have cards for you to write down questions at any time during the forum. Um, please write legibly, a little large if you can. Over fifty, got the glasses to prove it. Questions of a personal nature or personal invective will be out of order and not be asked. Uh, just raise your hand or wave them down, um, to have them pick up or give you a card to ask a question. All the questions come to me, the moderator, and I will sort the subject, the questions by subject, and I will try to cover a variety of subjects. We seldom have all time to ask all the questions, and sometimes I will rephrase or combine so you might not hear your question exactly as you wrote it. Um, but we'll try to get to everything as much as we can in a variety. The candidates have drawn lots to determine the order in which they will speak. Each candidate has three minutes for the opening statement, and our first, first candidate is Bondo. You have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you so much for coming. I'm very happy to see you here, and this gives me an opportunity to introduce myself to you. I've been a Brisbane resident for ten years now. I have two children. Um, we've lived in central Brisbane and at the ridge. Um, I've worked my way through undergraduate and graduate school, majoring in literature and in law, ultimately earning a Juris Doctorate. So, my legal training makes me comfortable with dense, multi-layered material and affords critical thinking skills that apply rigorous logic and analysis to very complex issues that were presented to us. Um, I've served on the Planning Commission for five years and at the chair, the current chair of the Planning Commission. I was appointed by the council in 2010, and I am naturally a quiet, inclusive, and thoughtful person. I resonate very deeply with one of my appointers in particular, and that would be Mr. Steve Waldo, who recently passed a few years ago. He was also the, quote, "quiet attorney." Um, Steve was instrumental in ushering a new era of civility to local politics. His rapier wit and keen scholarly insight notably characterized his work on our city council. He never shied away from difficult public issues and always helped craft reasonable compromises. I hope to do the same. Steve's mild manner, Clark Kent demeanor, did not hide or undermine his very Superman and very super-thinking-through-and-through status. I am earnest, um, and steadfast in my stewardship of our town values because I understand that we have certain core values that I myself have adopted and believe very earnestly, and I teach my children the same. Um, and I've done this through case studies and proposal reviews at the Planning Commission. I've taken public testimony, developing and recommending zoning regulations, taking action on land use regulations and applications, making recommendations to the city council regarding the city's general plan, the draft and final AR on the very important Baylands projects. And, um, all of these actions have profound impact on the physical, social, and economic development of our city. I have three particular priorities. Um, one is for the people, two is for the place, and three is for the public. In summary, the, for the people, I would like to expand educational opportunities such as enrichment opportunities for our youth, increase support and services for our young families, enhance support services for our senior citizens, increase recreational choices for all Brisbaneians. For the place, I would like to promote sustainable, environmentally responsible development in the Baylands, revitalize Cracker Park, and engage in the park site at Brisbane Village project. I would like to sustain public health and safety values by consistently maintaining optimal city staffing levels and increasing community services. For the public, I would like to preserve Brisbane's spirit of independence and small-town character, increase Brisbane's fiscal vitality through sound economic decisions, as well as, sorry, can I finish? Ensure that we sustain our continued leadership in environmental issues. Thank you.
Our next candidate for an opening statement is Alvin Louis.
Good evening, citizens of Brisbane. I am Alvin Louis, one of the six candidates on the ballot for the city council. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce for hosting and presenting this forum. This is my first run at public office. My mother immigrated My mother immigrated to this country from mainland China. She was the product of an arranged-picture marriage through family and friends. She arrived with my father off of a Pan Am flight in November of nineteen fifty-nine. I was born with the very next day at Chinese hospital in Chinatown. Mom came with nothing, and my dad had very little. We lived in a small two-room apartment above a meat market in Chinatown where we shared a kitchen and a bathroom with all the tenants on the same floor. When I was three, my mother convinced my father to purchase a small grocery store for two thousand dollars in the Excelsior District. He borrowed the money, and we moved to the back of the store with my younger brother to live. Growing up in a small store was a fantastic experience for a kid, but many lessons learned. Being one of the few Asian families growing up in our neighborhood had its challenges. After ten years, we left the corner store business. My mom was working for the postal service, and my dad went back to being a waiter. Our parents worked six to seven days a week. We never owned a car, and we relied on public transportation. We never went on vacation as a family, yet we still had a great childhood. We had parents that worked hard, saved money, and sacrificed for us so we would have a better future. Fast forward to today, my parents and younger brother have all passed. I am blessed with three children. My eldest, Erica, at twenty-seven lives in Austin. Adam, fourteen, is in his first year at Terranova, and Eileen, thirteen, is at Highland Christian School. Angie and I are the owners of a Japanese restaurant at the end of Pier Thirty-Nine. We have been in the restaurant business for fourteen years. In December of last year, I retired from the police force after serving the public for thirty-four years. I have been actively doing community service with the prestigious San Francisco Chinatown Lions Club for sixteen years. I am currently the club president. I had owned and oversaw investment rental properties in multiple locations for many years. Before I was a peace officer, I worked three years as a union warehouseman for Coca-Cola Bottling Company. I also worked in telemarketing and done weekend catering. I have traveled to over forty-six countries, and I have lived a full and active life. We moved to Brisbane fifteen years ago in two thousand and currently live on the ridge. My childhood and the values I learned from my parents have shaped who I am and have inspired me. I am so grateful to this country for giving our family the opportunity to achieve the American dream. Tonight, I stand before you as a candidate for city council.
Thank you. And our next candidate to do an opening statement is Jamil Munir.
Hello, my friends. My name is Jamil Munir. My wife and I and our two children have lived in Brisbane for twenty years. During almost all of the time, I have served as an active member of the Brisbane Planning Commission. I have been a practicing professional engineer for more than forty years, during the time I have traveled the world and live abroad, speak several languages. I have designed and built everything from oil and gas pipelines to nuclear power plants. And I can tell you firsthand from my personal experience that we need to rethink what we are doing to this planet. From my life experience, I have learned that it matters who you elect to represent you in government. Today, in the US, we too often elect candidates for public office who do not have the necessary qualification for the jobs they seek. At this particularly critical time, Brisbane cannot afford to make that kind of mistake. My advice to you is to be the change you want to be, to see in the world by electing candidates who not only share your vision but have the knowledge and experience to put your vision into practice. As you know, just because someone claims to have the vision, your ideas does not mean they have the worth of all to turn those ideas into a practical reality. I believe knowledge and experience of the kind I have gained in almost twenty years of service on the Planning Commission is important. Working together with my fellow commissioners and Brisbane staff employees to see to it that all new development matters that came before the commission during that time were decided in an open, technically sound, and fair manner that served the best interest of the city of Brisbane. It makes me well-qualified to continue my public service as a member of the city council. I know Brisbane wants change, and I agree that we need change that provide more shopping, affordable housing, more city revenues, more community recreation, improved education, better protection of the environment, and no housing development on the Baylands. The Brisbane community wants and deserves many things, but the problem is we don't always agree on what those things are and how to get them. There are tough decisions, and we have to make decisions that require the kind of knowledge, experience, and general somehow that has served me well during my time on the Planning Commission, and hopefully with your support will continue to serve me as a member of the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next candidate to do an opening statement is Madison Davis.
Hi. My name is Madison Davis, and I want to start off by telling you about my background and why I am running for office. As a lifelong Brisbane resident, I am fortunate to call Brisbane my hometown. I attended Brisbane Elementary School and Littman Middle School, and I'm a graduate of San Francisco State University with a degree in Business Administration. I work as an account executive for a software company and also serve San Mateo County as a court-appointed special advocate for foster care youth, mentoring and advocating for them in court. I serve on the Board of Directors for Brisbane Dance Workshop and on the Brisbane, on Brisbane's Perks and Recreation Commission. As a commissioner, I work to improve recreation while striving to make our Brisbane traditions relevant for future generations. One of these traditions I was able to bring back was our beloved Fire Hydrant Restoration Day. I'm sure many of you are wondering why I'm running for city council, so I thought I would give you the background story. I spoke at my first city council meeting at four years old. My mom had taken me to the meeting because the council had invited the public to come and give suggestions regarding the design of the new park. I remember sitting in the audience and listening to all the speakers and providing my mom with my constant feedback. In what I am sure was an effort to silence me, she explained, "Madison, don't tell me, tell them," pointing to the city council. The green light from my mom was really all I needed, and I marched straight to the podium, was lifted onto a chair, and given a microphone, and began explaining exactly what I thought our new park needed: grass, flowers, puppet shows, the works. When I finished, I remember there was a silence. Many looked as if they were in disbelief, and then a round of applause came. I left that meeting feeling proud, and when our new park was complete, that feeling turned into appreciation. Somehow, at that age, I felt like what I had said had made a difference. Here I was enjoying a park that indeed did have grass and flowers, and once a year, even a puppet show during day in the park. While this is not only one of my first memories, this experience had a profound impact on the importance I placed on serving my community. Today, I'm standing before you asking for your vote, not because I have my sights set on a political career or want some sort of prestige, but because I have deeply cared about Brisbane for as long as I can remember, and I have the experience to serve Brisbane well. Again, I want to thank you all for being here. I'm committed to being as honest and transparent as I can in my answers in order for you to gain a sense of the type of councilperson I will be. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Tom Heinz.
Thank you for coming tonight. I also want to thank the city of Brisbane for hosting this event, the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring it, and the League of Women Voters for moderating it. I claim no political ambitions and only have the welfare and goodwill of our city foremost in my thoughts. I'm really sorry Councilman Miller will not be continuing. I could never replace him. But over the last twenty-seven years, I've been an active participant in this community, speaking before the city council, the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, on issues that I know were of great concern to the public. To quote Dolores Gomez, "My concern is with those of us who make our homes here, plan to stay here, and care a great deal about what happens with our small town," unquote. I want to emphasize "our" small town. Five people plus a majority of staff, some of whom might be gone by the time the project is completed, cannot tell the people of Brisbane what is best for them. I want a city council that listens to the people. Those are words from former mayor John Bell in March nineteen eighty-eight. Both quotes come from the newly published Brisbane City of Stars, Fiftieth Anniversary the Second Twenty-Five Years, nineteen eighty-six to two thousand eleven. I highly recommend you read it, at least the first chapter, and, and see if you too realize a reoccurring theme. Conflicts, lawsuits, recalls, all occur because the council failed to listen to the people. Yes, I've had multiple careers, which have given me a global experience, and I use that global approach to problem-solving. And if there's one thing I've learned about myself over those various, uh, careers, is that I get very good at whatever I do. My parents taught me not to cheat, steal, or lie. I think those are good principles to live by. What I don't understand is when that becomes okay and acceptable. I cannot knowingly allow people to live on a toxic waste dump. I want to protect the city from future lawsuits, either from individuals or as a class-action suit whereby they claim we knowingly allow them to live there. The only way I would allow housing there is if they cleaned it up as required by law. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final candidate with an opening statement is Terry O'Connell.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to thank the chamber, the League of Women Voters, and mostly the residents who have come out and who have supported the council in the things we've tried to achieve over the years. We haven't achieved them all, and our battles are just beginning with the development on the Baylands and keeping Brisbane the way we wanted. Brisbane's always had a strong sense of community with caring, small-town ideals while facing real big-city concerns. With pleasure and dedication, I have served Brisbane on the city council and currently serve as your mayor. I'm honored to represent you and the combined interests on the council, um, and county, and countywide on the many boards and commissions that we serve on in our duties as city council people. In the past, I've served, served on the Board of Directors for Brisbane Dance Workshop, Sierra Point Yacht Club, San Bruno Mountain Watch, and I volunteered with the Live Abishinblues Concert Series. These activities have shown me what it's like to be a real part of a community and part of a family that cares about what we're going to do to the planet. Personal involvement can make a huge difference in the livability of our town, strengthening ties to Brisbane and reinforcing the values that are imperative to our well-built being. Brisbane has serious challenges to face going forward as a city and a society. With my strong-worth ethic, I will continue to keep Brisbane a leader on open space, wildland preservation, renewable energy initiatives, rebuilding, and sustainability. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions, of which I have several, but if you are, just came in, or if you think of one along the way, please feel free to track down an usher and write it down, large and legibly. Uh, each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. I will vary the order in which the candidates are called to speak. Um, minutes of order I made up for this, um, before tonight. Um, if a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will be asked the question first, and then the others will have a chance to respond. Um, I, as you probably have figured out, I have a lot of questions about the Baylands. Um, so there'll be more than one. You don't have to do your whole platform on the Baylands in one minute. Uh, so I will ask some sub-question, questions on the Bayland subtopics as we go along, so, um, just so you know. Uh, so with that, we will, um, get started, and we'll start with the Baylands. And we'll just start with a general one. What do you think the best uses are for the Baylands? And on this question, we'll start with Tom Heinz.
The fact that we can't have people living there, um, and the development doesn't seem to be, um, anything particularly sustainable, I think that we should use that land for, um, renewable energy. Big, open space, plenty of sun, plenty of wind, lots of possibilities. And we have a very innovative community here, and I'm sure you guys could come up with other things as well.
Thank you. Uh, next to answer the question is Terry O'Connell.
I agree that housing is not an option for the Baylands. The best use for that space would be renewable energy production. We could be a leader in the countywide production for the alternative energy program, which would give the residents of Brisbane the opportunity to purchase renewable energy, clean renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. And next to answer the question is Madison Davis.
Thank you. Uh, so as many of the other candidates have stated, I too am against housing at the Baylands, um, but I do have many ideas as to what we could incorporate. Um, and I think that the land could have multiple uses. So, I love to see a lot of open space. Um, as a Park and Recreation Commissioner, open space is very important to me. I would like to see some commercial development. As I've been going door-to-door, many citizens have been saying to me they would like to see more amenities in Brisbane. Uh, many of them have asked specifically for a grocery store, so I'd like to see that incorporated. I'd also love to see, uh, renewable energy options, wind and solar as well. And I think we can be leaders in sustainability, so whatever development we do have should incorporate sustainability as
So whatever development we do have should incorporate sustainability as best as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And next to answer this question is Alvin Louie.
I look at the Baylands as a great opportunity for the future of Brisbane and also the future of this whole Bay Area. This is a very huge area. It's a huge project. We currently have to go everywhere to get any type of services. We have families that recently have moved here. There's no services here provided for them. I see the Baylands as a possibility, any possibility for growth, whether it's hotels, convention centers, housing, I'm not opposed to. Commercial use. I also see the Baylands as a place that we could build for recreational purposes, for just any type of services that would help our community. When I think about going to places and wasting all our time and energy, driving to different cities to use services, I think we ourselves need to be able to have those services here in Brisbane.
Thank you. And next to answer this question is Von Doe.
In my opinion, I think that that area could be used for several uses. I too value the open space that we have, the Baylands. The renewable energy idea is also a good one, wind or solar. I think that one of the things when we consider possible commercial uses is that we have to evaluate the risk assessments in terms of health and also what the fiscal revenue, ROI for the city will be and the costs. So we have to balance the cost and the benefits. We have to do a benefits analysis, cost and benefits analysis. And I also agree, no housing.
Thank you. And finally, Jamil Munir.
Okay. We have the committee that has recommended several alternatives at that site. I'm talking about KRB, LSC, Red Bull. And that's the best use of that particular site. We will have the renewable energies. We will have some retail commercial space, open space. And the other thing that's coming up on the horizon, and I don't know, some of them may not know, that high-speed rail maintenance yard may be a possibility at that site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, no, that was everybody on this one. Thank you. So our next question. What do you believe qualifies you to make the major land use decisions on the Baylands development? What do you believe qualifies you to make the major land use decisions on the Baylands development? And our first one to answer is Terry O'Connell.
Thank you. Qualifications to make a decision on the Baylands have to be made by reading the documents, knowing what's there, and knowing where the opportunities lie. We can't all be experts, even though many of our community have spent days and days and days and months learning about what's there and what the opportunities and the toxins and what the ability to have of sustainable development there. So I don't think that I am overly qualified. I think that I'm going to need a lot of help and a lot of technical assistance to make a decision that's right for us here.
Thank you. And next on this question is Jamil Munir.
Okay. I have worked on these issues for a number of years. I'm a professional engineer, and I myself conducted many, many EIRs. I know inside and out about the traffic congestion studies. I know about the remedial measures for the contaminated soils. I know how to design things like buildings on that type of soils. And I also know about the renewable energy. I tried myself to be in that profession for a very long, long time. And with my 17 years on the Planning Commission, I'm fully prepared to help the city with the land use of Baylands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tom Hines.
I'm not sure what the qualifications would be for anyone. But like I mentioned earlier, I do have a global approach. I see the big picture. I could break it down into smaller elements and usually integrate them back together. I too am not an expert, and I will rely on input from you, the public, advisors, consultants, and the rest of the council.
Thank you. And next on this question is Madison Davis.
Thank you. So I have actually done a lot of research into the Baylands. I've read most portions of the FEIR and the DEIR. I've read our general plan, our housing element. I've worked closely on the sustainability framework for the Baylands on the Park and Recreation Commission. I've also read our history books, which I think are important as we're assessing the Baylands, just how Brisbane reacts to development and that sort of issue. I've also been attending the Planning Commission meetings. And I come from a recreation standpoint, which I think is important as we're looking at the Baylands. I've also met with John Swakki to discuss the Baylands as well. I'm by no means an expert, and I definitely would consult with our staff, trust in our Planning Commission, and hear the voices of the people when making a decision.
Thank you. And next on this question is Von Doe.
Ever since this started, the actual DEIR for the Baylands started in 2013, which is two years ago, I have been a part of the Planning Commission, and we have been in very, very intense discussions privately with each other and during workshops and with the Planning Department, as well as having, holding public hearings. We had, I believe, three public hearings for DEIR, and we are about to have another seven. Our workshop, our previous workshop is two weeks ago. Our second workshop is tomorrow. And so I feel like I'm pretty entrenched. I am not an expert necessarily, but I have learned to pick up my speed and pick up my pace very quickly. We've gone through the general plan, the DEIR we're working on, and have read the FEIR. And I rely heavily on our staff and our City Council, as well as my fellow Planning Commissioners.
Thank you. And finally, Alvin Louie.
I look at the Baylands like Tom from a larger perspective. Brisbane is just one small city among many cities around us. The development of the Baylands not just benefits our community, it benefits all the other communities around us. I worked at the airport for 25 years. I've seen tremendous growth at that airport. I've seen monumentous projects come and go. I've seen all the possibilities that could happen when there is a will to build and a will to grow. I know that this project's been in the works, the general plan, 1980, 1994. That's a long time. I have a quote. "It's better to start a plan, not a perfect plan, but a plan started is worth..." I can't get it right. Basically, a plan started is better than a perfect plan never started.
Thank you. And our next question. If thousands of units of new housing are built on the Baylands with or without your support, what must Brisbane do to ensure the safety of the residents and infrastructure build-out? And on this one, we will start with Madison Davis.
Thank you. I don't foresee that being a possibility. This town will not stand behind thousands of units at the Baylands. And so I don't consider that happening whatsoever. I would not stand by that. If that were so to happen, we must inform the people who would be moving in there as to what they are moving into. We need to set good expectations. People need to know what the risks are. We need to do everything we possibly can to clean up that land. But again, I don't foresee that happening, and I wouldn't back that.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tom Hines.
Could you repeat that question?
Sure. If some thousands of units of new housing are built on the Baylands with or without your support, what must Brisbane do to ensure the safety of the residents and infrastructure build-out?
If we have thousands of units there, we're going to need a much larger police force. We're going to need a much larger fire department. We're going to need perhaps some closer ambulance services and maybe even places to take those people. I also do not think that housing will ever be built there. And I think it's just kind of a moot point.
Thank you. And next on this question is Alvin Louie.
Four thousand homes is a lot of homes. But when we look at a project of this magnitude, we have to think realistically with the people that are developing this project. We cannot clearly say that there's not going to be any housing. If there is housing of whatever sort, we have to think back like the ridge. I'm sure people were concerned when the ridge was built. How would all these people affect our town of Brisbane? Well, the people from the ridge very seldom come down here. You could build another thousand homes on the ridge, and they would not even affect this town. That development would be its own standalone community. And if there's a reason for them to come up to Brisbane, I don't see. So if there is a possibility for development of housing, I'm sure in the planning, we will be able to figure out a solution for all that.
Thank you. And next on this question is Terry O'Connell.
If there were homes to be built there, which I am strongly opposed to, we should require the land to be cleaned up to standards that would allow for that type of development. I don't think that is possible. I think the amount of cleanup would be overly burdensome to any development. And it is likely that any developer would want to cap it and bury the problem. I wouldn't want to bury that problem, and it would not be a standalone community. It would be part of Brisbane. It's in our sphere of influence. So our requirements are to make sure that land is clean.
Thank you. And next on this question is Jamil Munir.
Okay. The premise is that we're going to have thousands of homes over there. First of all, it's impossible to build thousands of homes over there. It will be an engineering nightmare because of the type of soil we have. But suppose we are able to build there, we are to worry about the traffic congestion. So that means we need to build more highways, ramps like Geneva. We also have to have a lot of safety-related personnels to work there. And we also have to have a large amount of money to take care of the maintenance of those homes because there are going to be continuous problems with the settlement and the toxic gases that are coming out of that. And I don't like that idea at all because it will be a monkey on our shoulder, and we don't want that. That's the main reason I said no housing on the Baylands.
Thank you. And finally, Von Doe.
I think that that's a violation of our core values as a town. I think ultimately, we need to remember that the decision belongs to the people, and it will be put on the ballot. So if that were to happen, if the supposition goes through, which I find highly unbelievable, given our history in 50s and 60s, that we fought off the dumping in our town, how strongly we did that and how successful we were, again in the 80s, I don't see that happening in the, you know, 2000s, especially with our growing population. So I highly doubt that would happen. But if that were to happen, the health risk would be something that we would have to assess, and we would have to demand mediation.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is the significance of our city's general plan? What is the significance of the city's general plan? And to start this question is Alvin Louie.
Well, the significance of the general plan is the guide that was set forth in the 1980s and 1993. It's a long time. A lot of things have changed. And it is the guiding light, but we have to think this is 2015. Technology was barely existing in the 90s. We have to think about the future of our kids. We have to think about the future of our community. We have to think about the future of the region. That's all I have to say about the general plan.
Thank you. Next on this is Von Doe.
I think the general plan says pretty much everything we have to say about our city. It not only sets the parameters, but also sets priorities. And the priorities touch on our very core values. It is the spirit of Brisbane. It was crafted by the citizens and approved by the City Council. It is something that is the very personification of who we are. In order to make any land use changes or any significant changes that impact the political or the social or the physical land formations of our city, the general plan has to be something that we reference. So I believe that that is highly significant, and I think it's going to touch on all the major issues, i.e. the Bayland.
Thank you. And next on this topic is Jamil Munir.
Okay. General plan is the brainchild of planners that decided we need to have a specific plan as to what city wants to have or what to do. General plan actually is like a footprint that the city works on. That's where we develop all the codes, all the guidelines, and what we like the city to be, what we want to see, what the type of zoning requirements, the type of developments that we want is all specified in general plan. So to me, it's like a bible that sets us what we want, what Brisbane stands for. And that's the significance of Brisbane. It's a document prepared by the community, for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this is Madison Davis.
Our general plan is what guides us. It's our roadmap. And I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to read it, but I definitely recommend that you do. It's actually a really pleasant read. It has a lot of incorporation of stories of what Brisbane has been like through the years and quotes from a lot of Brisbane residents. It's the culmination of our values and the way those are to be exercised as we make any changes or we plan anything in the city. I think there are some areas that can be more specific, and that's something I would like to work on if elected. But any changes that we do make, they still must fall in accordance with our beliefs.
Thank you. And next on this question is Terry O'Connell.
Thank you. The general plan was the vision for the future. It was crafted with much diligence, and it was very progressive when it was done in 1980 and in 1994 when it was updated. It is the document that protects us and guarantees our future success. And it keeps us the way we want to be. It's a living document that has all the principles that we held dear at that time, and I think that we still hold dear now.
Thank you. And finally, Tom Hines.
If I may, I'd like to summarize something from Renee Sloan Holzman Sekai, the public law group. It was addressed to the mayor and the council about the Baylands EIR and planning review process. In this document, it says that the state of California allows a city to submit land use measures directly to voters. And the general plan is a land use blueprint that the specific plan must follow. I'm concerned that there are things coming up where we are going to jump straight into a specific plan and not have a general plan or a concept plan first.
Thank you. And our next question is, how do you see improving the Main Street business area? Main Street business, how are we going to improve it? Are you going to improve it? And first on this is Vando.
So in thinking about this, I think this has a lot to do with the second priority I was referring to earlier for the place. And that has to do with not only making sustainable, environmentally conscious and responsible decisions, i.e. asking potential tenants to or owners to be more energy efficient and conscious, but also to revitalize the area that is the crockpark in the village, Brisbane Village. So we have to do that in addition to thinking about what it is that we can do that balances the interests of potential tenants or in or owners with the fiscal needs of our city.
Thank you. And next on this question is Alvin Louis.
I've been here 15 years, and the Main Street has not improved much at all since I've been here. I'm a business owner, and for a business to survive and thrive, it needs a market. There's not enough people here to sustain a working business. You just need, there's not enough people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And next on this question is Terry O'Connell.
Our Main Street is mostly comprised by public, or excuse me, privately-held properties. And so that's very hard to control what businesses go in there and whether they're successful. The library being the new library proposed on the vacant city site of the old Five Star Cafe. I think we'll do a lot to perk up and vitalize the area, bring traffic in. We can get a lot of people from other areas coming in for our current library. And with a revitalized new library, I think that that can bring in some vitalization. But it really takes the business owners and the communities to support local businesses, if not just a matter of money.
Thank you. And next on this question is Jamil Munir.
This issue has been discussed over and over and over again. We had series of workshops about close to four, five years ago where we all sat down and tried to figure out what to do with the downtown. And now, there's another study that's just been approved by the council for Parkside Village. It's supposed to redo the entire Brisbane Village and also bring mixed-use homes and businesses. Very important things we have to learn and keep in mind that anything we do, we need to have the public's support. We need to find out the desires of the people. And we cannot just go ahead and start doing the planning. Of course, the people who own the businesses have to be in the whole process. And there are plans and works that can do that possibly. Thanks.
Thank you. And next on this is Tom Hines.
Well, I agree with what everybody has said so far. But I think it also has to do, or depend on what businesses are there. You know, we talk about our market, I mean, the market in general. And what is it that you would want? That's what we need to have here. You know, do we have to drive to South San Francisco to get it? Do we have to go to Daly City to get it? So it's more of what we provide here. And with the shops being privately owned, we don't have much control over that.
Thank you. And finally, Madison Davis.
Well, thank you to whoever wrote that question. I'm really thankful that that question was asked. From residents I have talked to, it's apparent that many of you would like to see improved amenities. And I am with you on that as well. This is something that I'm committed to working towards. Building a new library is a great start to addressing this issue because we will be setting the example by taking a condemned building and renovating it for the community to enjoy. We must set a good example if we want others to follow. We must connect with the chamber and property owners themselves to collaborate on how we can improve. Thankfully, we have Mitch Bull on board with the city who can help us develop a thriving downtown that meets our needs. And perhaps we need to create some incentives to motivate business owners to rent their property.
Thank you. Our next question, moving along, outside of the Baylands, what do you personally feel passionate about? What's one key item for correcting or maintaining this community? Outside of the Baylands, what do you personally feel passionate about? One key item for correcting or maintaining this community? And for this question, we will start with Jamil Munir.
Okay. One item that I'm really, really interested outside of the Baylands is what to do with zoning M1, where we have vacant property there for a very long, long time, BWR. And we need to develop some methods to utilize that property, as well as Marina that has been sitting there vacant for a very, very long time. And we are losing a lot of revenues. Even though you asked me for one, I gave you two. Because I'm passionate about those two places. Thank you very much. My time is over.
Thank you. And next on this is Madison Davis.
Thank you. Well, as some of you probably know, I am very passionate about recreation. Recreation is so important to our community. It keeps us happy, it keeps us healthy, it keeps us connected. This allows us to maintain our traditions. I think, you know, the restoration of the hydrants is a perfect example of the community coming together, generations old and new. And the art that has been provided by that is astounding and amazing to me. This maintains our small-town feel and allows us to come together and connect. And I think what goes hand-in-hand with recreation is the arts. And I am proud that we live in a community that prioritizes that, and that is something that is also very important to me.
Thank you. And next on this question is Vando.
I'm very passionate about a fully functional administrative body for our city. I think that means that when we have commissions and committees that reflects very well on the public engagement and the civic awareness of our town. And I think that that goes to the heart of inclusivity, and it keeps our city running and maintaining our core values. So I think that policy concerns are something that we all need to be involved in and highly engaged in. I would recommend that more of us come to all of the meetings, the various Parks and Recreation Committee meetings, the Planning Commission meetings, and the city council meetings to work together and collaborate so that we can all, as a unit, function well.
Next on this question is Tom Hines.
I also would like to thank the person that wrote that question. Two words, Sierra Point.
Thank you.
Wait.
Wait.
No, I'm done.
You're pretty good. Okay, a little more time for Tom.
For quite a while, this city's been trying to take away your land down there. The waterfront property at Sierra Point is your land. It is in the public trust. And yet, the city has been trying its best to deceive us and take that land from us and give it to the developer. Well, maybe not give it, but trade it, sell it, auction it, I don't know what. But they've tried their best to take that land from us. So that's what I'm very passionate about. And speaking of passion, please don't confuse my passion for anger. I'm really very concerned about Sierra Point. That's our land, and that's what we need to develop for us.
Thank you. And next on this is Alvin Louis.
I have many passions. But the passion that I see benefiting this community is, I'm a member of the Lions Club, I believe in community service. When a community gets together and they find the needs of that community, whether it's the youth, whether it's with the seniors, whether it's any major community project, when you join an organization that focuses on serving and knowing your community, knowing the needs of your community, you build a stronger community. And for me, I believe that we should be able to work on a stronger community service.
Thank you. And finally, Terry O'Connell.
Well, for those of you who know me, my one passion outside of the Baylands is San Bruno Mountain. And it is the true treasure that Brisbane has that is unique to Brisbane. We protect it, we love it, and we try to retain its value and its integrity as one of the only open spaces that are accessible to people on the peninsula. And it is the treasure we need to preserve.
Thank you. Our next question is, how much experience is needed in the private and public sectors to be a good city council member? How much experience is needed in the private and public sectors to be a good city council member? And for this one, we will start with Tom Hines.
Right. I consider life experience to be very valuable. And I am not sure of the rest of the question.
I'm reading it as written. How much experience is needed in the private and public sectors? Also could be considered what kind of experience?
Like I mentioned before, my various careers that I've been in have given me a broad, general experience. And I look at things from both sides. That's just part of me that looks at everything. I measure, is this more valuable than that? Experience in the private and public sectors. Private sector, my experience has mainly been as an artist. I exhibit and sell in a gallery in San Francisco, which I am also on the Board of Directors of.
Thank you. And next on this question is Terry O'Connell.
Being on the city council, experience can help. But for the most part, it's an ability to represent the people and to listen to the people and to take everything with a grain of salt. You can't believe everything you hear from every person. You need to know who to listen to, when to listen to them, and when to ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this is Madison Davis.
That question is very interesting. I almost feel like it's a loaded question. I think what really matters is the individual. They need to be honest, they need to be humble, they need to be able to be in this position and not let it go to their head. They need to be able to be your servant and not your king or your queen. Our job is to be your voice. They have to have the drive and the willingness to do the work. And they also have to have the ability to admit when they're wrong and to ask a question when they don't know something. And that is what I will be for you.
Thank you. And next on this is Alvin Louis.
I think having a wide variety of experience is very important for the city council. I think a good, strong business background is important. I think being a family person is very important. I think being in community service is very important. I believe that the character of the person is very important. A person has to be open-minded, listen to all options and not shut ideas off. They have to be able to be a very good listener. They have to be balanced and understanding in their decision-making and be clear in their thoughts. It's not easy being a councilman, I know. A lot of the people up here, they've done a tremendous job for our community up here, and I applaud all of them. But I think the experience is very important.
Thank you. Thank you. And next on this is Vando.
I think much experience is necessary in terms of public. I feel that having been a part of the Planning Commission, I have been able, I have been honored, actually, to work with staff. So I've learned a lot from their technical abilities, and I rely heavily on them. I've worked with experts in the field. And again, I rely heavily on their technical assistance and expertise. I've worked with the public, having taken public hearings and taken public comments. I have worked with the city council, I have worked with subcommittees. So I think in the public area, I have the experience to reflect on my interests and also the public interest. In terms of the private sector, I've worked as a contract attorney, so I am very familiar with small business needs and also the idea of fiscal responsibility and fiscal accountability. Also, character is key. And I think for me, two things really stand out, that you have to be a public servant. That is your key, that is why you're elected. You have to be a representative, and you must be transparent.
Thank you. And finally, Jamil Munir.
Okay. My 17 years on Planning Commission says itself what kind of experience I have. Also, 40 years in the both public and private sectors. I had the opportunity to work with almost every county, every cities in the state of California. And it's important that city council has the ability to work not only with the citizens, but other committees, other county, cities, and public sectors. I have done all of that throughout my career for the last 40 years. And I have worked on the land use issues, helped public hearings, and worked on the technical issues. So to be a city council, you need to have as much of that experience as possible to make very good decision that will serve the needs of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question, how have you been involved in preventing global warming? How have you been involved in preventing global warming? And on this one, we start with Terry O'Connell.
Well, that's a big question. I think on the individual basis, I've been involved by trying to reduce usage of energy. And as far as the council, we have enacted several plans to have a renewable energy plan, a sustainability plan, and to encourage businesses to have an energy audit so they know where they stand. But it's something that a community and an individual can only make a little difference. But in what we plan for in the future and what we develop and how we develop, we can make a difference globally as a community. So I think it's going to take some work with the community, with the county, with the state, and in the global to make a solution.
Thank you. And next on this is Jamil Munir.
My involvement in this goes as far back as 1970s, when I received a grant from National Institute of Health to study the effects of over-air pollution and the distribution in the environment. I also did the studies on the pesticide distribution in the San Joaquin Valley. All of them are really related to what happened to our planet. It is a global issue. I have been a consultant to many countries, including Fiji Islands, where I was there to find out what can be done to reduce the energy footprint. We have to do everything we can to reduce the carbon dioxide, which is the main culprit. And I did that study to show that we will have the accumulation of carbon dioxide. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on this question is Tom Hines.
How have I been involved in global warming? I have not been involved. I consider us to be quite conservative with water usage, with the things that create global warming. I was also involved with a group that put on a local conference about global warming. And again, it is going to take working with everybody, the community and the state, as many people as we can. We need an education program too.
Thank you. And next on this is Vando.
I think it starts small, or it can start small. But as the name suggests, it requires the global community. It's not something that our town, no matter how adamant and persistent we are, can do alone. But I think it can start small. So for instance, the other day, we were at the farmer's market. And I tell my kids, eat low on the total food. Eat low on the food chain because it reduces the greenhouse gases because of all the things that we eat and how it comes out and what they need. And so, starting small is where we can start so that we don't ever feel that we're ineffective because we do as a collective, are very effective when we want to be. But it is a large study and large project. But in terms of my professional experience with that, I think we study that every day. In everything that we do, for every land use application, we talk about renewable energy. We talk about how it affects the environment. We talk about how it affects the air. We talk about how it affects the traffic. So I think that we do it one project at a time, one meal at a time.
Thank you. And next on this is Madison Davis.
Well, that is definitely a very big question. I know that it's referencing what we as candidates have done. So I try my best to shop local. I think that's where you need to start. We want to reduce the carbon emissions that are given off by trucks transporting food. So that's a really good way. Plus, that supports the local economy. I carpool to work, so that's another way that two of us can get to work with one less car. I reduce my usage of both water and energy. I think that question also should have asked about the drought because that's very important to California. I don't wash my car as long as I can stand it. So it could go anywhere from four to five months without a car wash, which people like to comment on. I compost. And I've also worked on the sustainability framework for the Baylands, which will be important when we're assessing that land as well. So it should be a multifaceted approach and you have to start with yourself first and then move on to others.
Thank you. And finally, Alvin Louie.
Global warming, it is a very debatable subject. I know that personal responsibility is the most important thing that any, all of us could do. It's how we live our life. It's how we consume the foods that we eat, the products that we buy. If we stay fit and we're healthy, that will drastically reduce greenhouse gases.
Thank you. And our next question, we have a couple about Parkside. What is your opinion or stance on the multi-story, it looks like multi-story buildings in the Parkside development? How do you feel? What is your stance on the multi-story buildings in the Parkside development? And on this one, we start with Madison Davis.
Thank you. Well, I commend our city council for looking at that area. I think it's definitely a great destination for us to revitalize. For me, I like the idea that we can have some mixed use in Crocker Park. Of course, we want to make sure whatever buildings that we put out there, they're going to complement our values as a town. They're not going to be too large, but I think it's great that we're going to be able to bring in some more businesses there. And I think this will also help connect us with the Ridge. I think that that's very important to bring our two communities together. And I can see this being the link between Central Brisbane and the Ridge, which is very important to us as a community.
Thank you. And next on this is Tom Hines.
I agree with the mixed use, but I think we need to limit the height. I don't like seeing big, tall buildings along major streets. And I think we have to consider not only what those buildings and uses are, but the traffic impacts that it's going to have.
Thank you. And next on this is Alvin Louie.
I believe any development that is in place would be an improvement and beneficial for the city of Brisbane. More people, more taxes, more revenue.
Thank you. And next on this would be Terry O'Connell.
The proposed changes to our Brisbane Village, I think, came to the city council and were approved on the guise of housing, on our housing element, without proper input from the community. I think that it came through budget hearings and that we have not done a proper job of reaching out to the community as far as letting people know if that's what they want. I think that we've got a big road ahead of us to determine what the community wants and that we really don't know. I personally know that a five to six-story use of that area would be larger than I would want to see. Naming it the Parkside Village is to take away the two things that, what we named a development for, that we're going to be taking away, Parkside and Village.
Thank you. And next on this is Jamil Munir.
This issue came before the planning commission as a part of the housing element. And we looked at the possible sites where we can have this affordable housing. The proposal that was submitted at the city council meeting to have a consultant to do that, I think is a very good idea. It's based on the Form Based Code, which is also state-of-the-art. At this point, a lot of communities are doing that. But my main concern is that it is not the good timing at this point where we are doing the EIR. And we have to slow down and look at the facts that we need community involvement in this. We need some time to review before we go ahead and say, well, if we should have four-story buildings or six-story buildings or whatever. The idea is very good. I think it will bring some businesses and revitalize the downtown, but we need to go slow.
Thank you. And finally, Vando.
I think we need to remember that nothing is set in stone in terms of the project that we're discussing. And I think the other thing we need to remember is that community choice is key. We are looking or at the last city council meeting on the seventeenth, it was said and it was publicly announced that MGI would be the consultant. They already have up to three surveys planned to include the public, to ask you, do you want five-story buildings? It is not something that is already permanent. It's an opportunity to revitalize an area that we all care about, not only for residents, but also to create revenue for our city. We also have to remember that on any given day, we have close to up to 2,000 employees who come in and use our amenities. And so that is something that we need to consider. And I think the mixed-use idea is a very good idea. The key is that the community must be engaged.
Thank you. And our next question is, what fresh ideas will you bring to the city council? What fresh ideas will you bring to the city council? And first up on this is Alvin Louie.
I wasn't born here. And a lot of the citizens that live in this town currently was not born here. I don't know how it was when you guys grew up here, but I'm from a different perspective. I have a lot of experience in a lot of different things. I have a lot of viewpoints from a lot of different perspectives. I bring experience and I bring a different viewpoint on all these different subject matters.
Thank you. And next on this is Vando.
I think some fresh ideas include the engagement, the public engagement that we have, the current city policy and how it's set and how we talk to our public and how we provide the information, so information dissemination, transparency, the way we conduct our hearings, perhaps to be more inclusive or to at least be better listeners. It seems to be what I hear at most of our hearings. And so I do encourage that we have that open communication. I think that in addition to that, I bring my work ethic, which is a very different perspective as a mother, as a very active community member with both the moms, the young families, and the small business town owners. And in addition to that, my experience as a planning commissioner.
Thank you. And next on this is Jamil Munir.
The fresh ideas, we can learn a lot from other cities. And it's important that we communicate with our neighborhood cities to find out what they're doing and try to adopt that. One of the new concepts that's coming up is Form Based Code, which is not understood by many, many people, but it has a lot of merits. Another fresh idea will be to work closely with the citizens and form a committee that can look at the entire revitalization program for the downtown and see what can be done in conjunction with the consultant is trying to do. Thanks.
Thank you. And next on this is Madison Davis.
Thank you. I'm actually working on this right now on the Park and Recreation Commission through our Subcommittee of Fundraising. We are working together to develop an event that would bring many other people in from outside of town. We are looking at possible places for this, potentially the Marina, Mission Blue. We haven't worked it all out yet, but what we'd like to do is bring people in for a really interesting event, whether that be a speaker series or maybe, you know, like a Taste of Brisbane, something like that, where we can bring people in, expose them to Brisbane, and also use those funds in a time when we are in a recession so that we don't have to cut recreation and we can funnel those there so that we can continue to make recreation a priority. So that's something I'm working on now. I would love to partner up to help revitalize our downtown. I'd also love to see us connect more with our seniors and providing a holistic approach to help them age comfortably in their homes. I know this has been discussed, kind of like the village concept, so I'd love to see something like that be incorporated.
Thank you. And next on this is, fresh ideas that you will bring to the city council, is Terry O'Connell.
Well, as the sitting member of the council, it's hard to have fresh ideas because we've thought about a lot of things. But one of the things that I'm very passionate about is any new development that we have should look at the tiny houses. They should look at small footprints, truly make them affordable and small. If we are going to reduce our footprint and have sustainability, we can't be building bigger, bigger, bigger. If affordability is the issue that we want to address and housing is an issue we want to address, we need to look at the tiny houses and the small, limiting the size of homes that can be built.
Thank you. And finally, Tom Hines.
Well, I agree with Councilwoman O'Connell about the small footprint of housing. When we moved into Brisbane, our house was 600 square feet, 20 by 30, and that was plenty. That was sufficient. So fresh ideas I would like to bring is more art. I agree with recreation events. You know, down at Sierra Point, there's been some bicycle competitions and that draws a huge crowd. If we could promote that more, advertise it more, those people that come to see that bicycle event will come here into the city. They'll eat in our restaurants, buy some food, whatever. They do bring visitors. So if we could have some more competitions, more, not necessarily sports, but competitions like maybe RC Car Racing or, again, the bicycle races and...
Thank you. All right, we have another question. It's about budget. Tell us what you think of Brisbane's financial health. Any concerns you might have of the recent budget and any changes you would like to make? When you think of Brisbane's financial health, are there concerns or changes you would like to make, concerns about or changes you would like to make to the budget? And first up on this is Vando.
If you look at the budget productions and the budget plan that was presented in May by our city manager, Clay, you can see that we are still suffering from the recession. And we suffer in several ways, but we are steadily climbing out of it. But if you look at the budget, in the next five years, the first three years, we're still recovering, meaning we are still operating in deficit. The second, not until the fourth year that we start to have some sort of revenue. And even then, it's only a three-digit revenue. And then it's the fifth year that we have the four-digit revenue. But the point is that there's lots of things that we need to do in order to create the revenue that our city does need. And we need to make sure that we sustain our core values. So one of the instances is to maintain our public safety. So from nine, we used to have nine police officers, now we have a full body of 16. Those are the issues that are my budgetary priorities.
Thank you. And next on this is Alvin Louie.
I've looked at the budget and as I can see, there is a very ample reserve that the city has saved. I am fiscally conservative by nature. I believe in investments. And I know that with inflation, the cost of labor and services, we need to be able to create the revenue that is able to sustain the inflation that is going up as we move forward. Inflation's going to happen, so we have to be able to meet that challenge.
Thank you. And next on budget is Terry O'Connell.
Thank you. I sat on the budget committee and we worked long and hard to bring a proposal to the council that staff, community, and the council could live with. It is true that we are working in a balanced budget, but to balance it, we took money out of reserves. Our income has come back from the recession levels and with good planning, we were able to not cut services that the public noticed unduly. But we do need to live within our budget and we are very robust in our spending when it comes to recreation and public services. We've done a really good job and more than most cities, we spend over 20% of our budget on recreation purposes. So I think that we've been spending a lot of money on needed infrastructure and that's why we are in a deficit at this time, or deficit spending, because we've been putting off infrastructure projects that need to be done and we are proceeding with those at this time.
Thank you. And next on budget is Jamil Munir.
After listening to Mayor Terry O'Connell, I don't know what more I can add to that other than the fact that we may have to pay $4 billion to the state as a part of the redevelopment funds that Jerry Brown wants back from us. In order to increase the revenues, we already have some very, very good projects that we can do, which is the renewable energy at Baylands. That should bring at least $10 to $15 million in the next 10 years. Also, if we just build one hotel on Sierra Point, my analysis shows that city can generate close to $10 to $15 million in 10 years' period. So we have those sources available. And the thing is, we need to have plans how to do that and how to grab it. That's where I can come and help a city council, as a city councilman.
Thank you. And next on this is Tom Hines.
Well, yes, the city is working off of a five-year plan. Apparently, they've gone from looking at the budget every year to this five-year structure. And within that, there are 23 work plans that are set up. Some of those have been done already, like the community survey. I do know that we are not... I do know that we are not in the black yet, but by the fifth year, we will be, and those numbers look ever increasing, and we, like, and like I said, we have done some of these work plans already, and some are still in planning, like there will be a Sierra Point design development strategy, airborne noise, things like that, green building ordinances update, quarry permit.
Thank you. And finally, Madison Davis.
Thank you. So it's good to see that our city is recovering from the recession. I know many cities have not been as fortunate. I think we are being responsible with the revenue that we have and the expenses that we have. We need to continue these efforts of good planning. It's also important for us to consider new projects and how they will impact our finances. And really, at the core of this is that we need to prioritize increasing our tax base. That's going to help us overall, because we can only cut so much without it impacting the areas that we'd like to see maintained. So it's really important that we do need to increase that tax base. One thing that I'd like to see incorporated, and this could be more of a long-term project, is the capital improvement by including bathrooms at the tennis courts. That's an area that's under service, and that's something that the Park and Recreation Commission asked for but was not included in the budget. So hopefully, we can get that accomplished in the next five to 10 years.
Thank you. We have a question specifically about Sierra Point, but it's pretty generous, says new design guidelines for Sierra Point. So we'll just ask in general about Sierra Point. And to start on this is Jamil Munir.
Okay. Sierra Point has been, majority of the site at the Sierra Point is still vacant. There is one project that we approved when I was in planning commission to have the lab. That project is still sitting there after, what, almost three, three to four years? We need to do something, and the way I propose to do, I suggest to do is to have a new plan as to what, change the, the, the current zoning to allow more type of businesses over there. Currently, a lot of people don't even know that we allow restaurants at that, at that particular site. So we need to work and market that particular area so that we can bring more businesses. A lot of clients with a lot of these...
Thank you. And next on Sierra Point is Madison Davis.
Thank you. I agree with Jamil. This is an area that we definitely need to utilize more. We perhaps need to maybe hold some events out there, get the public out there. But also, I think this really starts with looking at the buildings that we do have there and understanding where our design, where the design flaws are and addressing those. And we need to take an approach of being forward-thinking and at the forefront of innovation. And that really starts with us recognizing what we need to improve and addressing that.
Thank you. And next on this is Vondo.
The current proposal is that there be a research and development facility out there in addition to a possible retail area. I think those are two possible uses, given the current zoning ordinances. However, I think that two things we need to think about is other opportunities to utilize that, that area. So other uses such as public events and/or restaurants or, or smaller business owners. In addition to that, I think we need to do a better job educating our public about what is the actual zoning ordinance and zoning permits that are available out there, so that when the applications come in, we will have greater variety, so we can actually utilize it and create greater revenue for our city.
Thank you. And next is Tom Hines.
Well, I'm looking forward to the planned workshops about Sierra Point. This has been going on for a long time as well, and I think we have so many opportunities there. That waterfront is ours, and if we can bring people there, that will trickle down here into the city, that will overflow. We will have revenues, we will have people here. If we have some major events there, people will come and stay in hotels there, and it just, it will snowball, it will sustain itself.
Thank you. And next is Alvin Louie.
In looking at the scope of all these projects that have come forth tonight, we can see that there's a lot of things that have not moved forward. It's obvious that we need to be able to prioritize what we're going to yield the most benefit out of and put those in a, in a, in a priority order, so that we're able to focus on what's going to yield us the most value and focus on those. If we just keep working on low-priority issues, then we're just going to get low-priority results. I see that there's not enough marketing for business, as from a business point of view, a lot of people don't know much about Brisbane. We've got to be able to sell Brisbane, but if we keep our exclusive attitude about it, it's going to be very difficult to be able to market the city.
Thank you. And finally, Terry O'Connell.
I spend a lot of time out at Sierra Point. We have a beautiful marina. We have a lovely waterfront that is a joy to go to, and we have a lot of public that comes out and enjoys it. Unfortunately, a lot of the area is under long-term development agreements that are held by privately-owned companies. They have a business plan that they have already planned out. They've got ideas for how they want to make their property and use their property, and they have not built it. And we need to tighten up the development agreements through there. We need to force them into taking down the fences that are there and to beautify the area that we have control over, which is a small portion, but if we can parlay that, we can make an even more vibrant spot. But right now, with it being in public, private, excuse me, in private hands, we don't have choices.
Thank you. Well, I still have lots of great questions. You've been a fabulous group, and it's been a pleasure to come to Brisbane, but this is going to be our final question, so that we can adjourn on time, and I have a couple that I'm going to combine. What are your top priorities for Brisbane in the next three to five years and the next 10 years? And what are you going to do for our children's future? So top priorities for near-term, three to five, 10 years, and our children's future. And first up on this is Tom Hines.
Unfortunately, we don't have much room to create more housing that's safe. If we do increase housing here, we are going to need some schools, more schools. And I know people have tried to bring a high school here for years, and it just hasn't happened. And in the long run, as Brisbane does continue to grow, those are going to be absolute necessities.
Thank you. And next on this is Terry O'Connell.
Short term, we need to look at what we're doing in our downtown with housing. We need to look at the Baylands and develop a renewable energy strategy to capture what that site is going to be good at. And in the long term, we need to protect San Bruno Mountain, the open space, we're the only ones that have that left, so. Short, mid, and long term.
Thank you. And next on this is Madison Davis.
Thank you. Well, all the issues I am about to discuss with you are all things that are at the forefront of my concern and things that I think that we need to focus on in the short term and long term. So clearly, the Baylands is a very big issue. We need to make sure that we are being sustainable with the development that occurs there. Again, visitation is something that we need to address. We need to start encouraging businesses to come in and, and working together to revitalize that so it can be enjoyed by all. We have an aging population, we need more services for seniors, we need to be able to support them and keep them as vital parts of the community. Our teens are also a subset of our demographics, that they need attention, they need more constructive outlets. We don't provide our teens with much right now at a time that they really need it. And also, we need more services for working parents. We need to be able to provide classes and recreational outlets that they can actually take their children to, and their children can benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Alvin Louie.
The future for our generation of kids and kids to follow, we have to develop that Baylands. The Baylands is what's going to be able to bring jobs to our community. It's going to be the revenue source for us to be able to do the big projects that we need to sustain and grow our, our population and also to grow our community. We're very limited here. I see the Baylands as with so much possibilities, and I see the future of our children in the Baylands.
Thank you. And finally, Jamil Munir.
Okay, in three to five years, I'm looking at, and I will just keep you in the bullet form, renewable, renewable energies at Bayside, and I really like the Crables Plan. Develop Sierra Point, more recreation for our children. We don't even have a functional teen center at this point. Downtown revitalization, affordable housing, which is part of the Parkside Village, and we have to do something about our seniors. We only have one senior housing here. Long term, protect the San Bruno Mountain, protect the open space, and protect the quality of our life here, that we all, at the, and the small, small-town feeling that we have in Brisbane that we all cherish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I misspoke. And finally, Vondo.
So for the short term, we're talking three to five years, it actually extends a lot further as well, but in general, the Baylands is obviously a huge issue for all of us, affects the entire community, therefore affects all of our children and our, our future. So again, no housing, greater revenue-producing opportunities out there. In addition to that, in terms of education opportunities, maybe another preschool option, increasing touring services, support services for our community in general, greater transportation in town for our seniors as well as our families, our younger families, local jobs for residents, workforce housing, and increased childcare services for our working families. Recreation opportunities, I have two personal really likes, perhaps adding fencing and archery to our rec choices that we currently have.
Thank you. And now it is time for the closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for the closing statements. We will reverse the order from the opening statements, and we will start with Terry O'Connell.
Thank you. I oppose oversized developments and walls of urbanization. I support preserving San Bruno Mountain and saving San Francisco Bay for the future generations. We must keep our principles and our standards strong, and you, the public, involved in those As your city council member, I'll continue to bring my personal goals of ecological sustainability and preservation of our community values. Issues around growth, development, sustainability, housing, open space are not resolved. Planning for what our future will bring continues to be an important goal in Brisbane. This must be done right and with participation from the entire community. People have talked about needing more amenities and more services and more grocery stores and more schools and more everything. I like Brisbane. I like the small community that we have, and I think that sustainability doesn't mean you have to grow. It doesn't mean you have to be everything in one community. I think we share an ideal that we can let our kids and our dogs play in the street and that we feel safe, and large growth does not necessarily keep that value. So I would be honored to continue to serve as your city council member, and I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. And the next for closing statement is Tom Hines.
I'll begin my closing by paraphrasing French philosopher Rousseau. "The people, he hoped, would follow their consciences to vote for or choose what was best for the community as a whole." In my opinion, the city doesn't do enough outreach. Simply posting a notice, I don't think is enough. We need a town crier. Seriously, folks, you deserve more than two minutes to express yourself, and usually that is in reaction to a decision that's already been made. San Francisco is a major tourist draw. We should be able to attract some of those tourist dollars, but not without a major draw, like having world-class architecture. And I don't see the Baylands as being that draw as it is now planned. Traffic? Ask yourselves, how long is my commute now? Then, how much more time are you willing to add to that? And I'm not talking about just the Baylands traffic, but also the newly proposed Parkside at Brisbane Village on Bay Shore, and there are plans for Sierra Point as well, which is a narrow road for ingress and egress. I believe it's very important that any big development here be put to a vote by the residents that it affects. I also believe it's important to keep power in the hands of the people. I think we all understand how governments are influenced by large corporations and big money. I don't want to see that here in Brisbane. When the people lead, the leaders will follow. Thank you again for coming out tonight.
Thank you. And next is Madison Davis.
I want to thank the chamber and the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. If there's anything I want you, the public, to take away from this debate, it's this. As your future councilperson, I am committed to listening to all of you, not just the people who are outspoken. I will assess both sides of every issue and draw my own conclusions. I have a proven ability to collaborate with our city staff, to determine a common ground, develop solutions, and analyze information objectively, which will be an asset to the city council as we face crucial decisions. We need someone who understands Brisbane's traditions and values while also bringing to the table a fresh perspective. I will be alive to experience what happens at the Baylands. I'm not only invested in this project because it will shape our city, but because this will directly impact me and the family I will one day raise here. That is why I'm committed to advocating for what's right for Brisbane. I do not want to see housing at the Baylands because I am concerned about the health risk it poses and the shift in voting power it will create. I am committed to advocating for our aging population by supporting programs that help seniors age in place. I will continue supporting young families and the development of more constructive outlets for Brisbane's teens. I stand behind revitalizing Crocker Park so it may be better utilized and creating an environment where our businesses can flourish. In Brisbane, we have major issues to address, but many of you have told me that it's the lack of amenities, parking problems, and airplane noise that are also important to you. To me, there is no issue too small. As we wrap up tonight, I want to leave you with this quote from Margaret Mead. "Never doubt that a few thoughtful citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Your vote makes a difference, and your opinion matters. I respectfully ask for your vote and look forward to serving you. Together, we will make Brisbane even better." Thank you.
Thank you. And next closing statement is Jamil Munir.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, and Brisbane. Thank you, League of Women Voters and Brisbane Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I believe that we're working together in a balanced way to address the environmental, social, and economic challenges that lie ahead. We can create and revitalize Brisbane that serves the best interest of all of our citizens. We heard a lot of, like, we heard a lot of things here about the involvement of the community. This is a central thing that a lot of people complain about, that we don't have a voice at the council. We need to get rid of that concept that people have. And I will try my best to have an open-door policy if I get elected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and the next closing statement is Alvin Louie.
Reviewing all the important challenges and issues facing Brisbane, the nine-thousand-pound gorilla, not the eight-hundred-pound one, is the baylands. In talking to the residents over the years and listening to them, I've come away with a consistent message. We don't want development, we don't want housing, we don't want more residents, there's too much traffic, and there's so many problems to deal with. Some view the baylands as a curse with too many issues. Since moving to Brisbane fifteen years ago, we have to go out town to purchase gas, food, medications, essentials for the house, to dine out, to entertain, and most common services. Realizing everyone in this town has the same issue. We have to depend on our neighboring cities for our basic needs. With that, we are using our hard-earned money supporting other cities while we get very little in return. The money we spend needs to support our own town. I don't see the baylands as a negative. I only see unlimited possibilities. I see the baylands as a blessing, a stream of income, a place of growth for future generations to come, a place for recreation, a place to entertain large special events, jobs for residents, places to dine, places to shop, a transportation hub, and yes, a place to meet new neighbors. As a community, we should focus on the positives and develop the baylands to its maximum potential. With future revenue, we can use it to fund infrastructure projects on our side of town. Let this development be the gateway for Brisbane to be a model city, a destination city, a city cherished by everyone. It's been too long. We have to face our obligation to all Brisbane residents to use the land for our benefit and everyone around us. The amazing thing is, we can do it all without losing the small-town feel that we have right now. With my experience and vision, let me use my strengths as a team player, a team builder, to work with the council and staff to make Brisbane a better place to live.
Thank you, and finally Bando.
Thank you, citizens, for your time, LWV for your moderation, the city for hosting the event, and the Chamber for sponsoring the event as an avenue for conversation and impetus for the community to come together and engage. Brisbane has been my home for close to a decade now, and its interests have become my own. I cherish a small-town character and strong community sensibility. Coming from a large refugee family with strong community values, I experienced firsthand the importance of interdependence and collaboration, something we all do here. Indeed, I wouldn't be here but for the unfailing support of family and community. Past experiences instilled in me an unwavering passion for and a keen commitment to public service as my way of giving back. Change is part of life, and is a natural part of our evolutionary process. The question really is, what type of change and how will impact our core values, and what will we do with that? Our fierce independence will serve us well as we prioritize and balance the competing interests together. As a Brisbaneian, I have been engaged community member, planning commissioner and chair, wife, mother, and attorney. Having lived in central Brisbane and at the ridge, I have enjoyed many amenities in our town and would like to add more. Among them, some of my most cherished memories are of my two sons playing ball in the neighborhood park, hunting for eggs at mob and Brisbane Easter events, becoming adept swimmers at our community pool, and scrambling happily along our town's own local treasure, the San Bruno Mountains. Naturally, continued enjoyment of these community benefits requires earnest and steadfast stewardship of our town's values, values I have upheld during my service as planning commissioner and chair and parent in our local community.
Thank you. You can find additional information about the candidates on the League's SmartVoter site, www.SmartVoter.org. All the candidates have been invited to enter their information and link to their own websites. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and membership is open to both men and women of voting age. If you are interested in helping your community with forums such as these, brochures are available out in the lobby, and for information about joining us. Remember to vote on or by November 3rd. You should have your ballots by October 16th at the latest. Encourage others to vote it well and spread the word about the mail-in-only ballot. And now, in conclusion, I would like to thank the candidates for putting themselves out there and running. It is not an easy thing to do. It's a very brave thing to do. And I think we should all thank them for doing that, and we enjoy your thinking. Thank you all.